I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Lord Jesus, may we know the peace and the compassion and the comfort of your presence in our lives. I ask that you provide this board with wisdom so that we can go about making wise decisions. I also ask that your love and grace will flow through every minister, teacher, and staff member to every student so that they will know of their infinite value and their infinite value to you demonstrated through your salvation. All these things I pray in your most powerful and self-sufficient name, Jesus. Amen. Future board meeting for September the 26th and then October the 10th, followed by November the 14th. Divisions of agenda, I believe we have an addition to donation. And there was something else, I just forgot what it was. The management on HR.
That's all I had.
Under recognition tonight, we have some donations that I want to highlight and that will take a vote to approve. The first one being a $1,200 donation from CIE LLC for Southwood Ag Department. We also have a $3,100 donation from 3,000, that being Bingo Charity Gaming, Wauwahatch Elks, and the other $100, Jerry Sheffield, and that's for Northfield Wrestling. We also have a recommendation to approve a $400 donation from Rich Valley United Methodist Church, and that would be for Northfield Robotics. Appreciate the donations.
I move to accept the donations. Second?
Call in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Under staff recognition, Mr. Keith Baber.
Yes, tonight we have with us our transportation director, Mrs. Melissa Ball, and she is, wants to recognize our bus mechanic, Kyle Howley, and so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to her, and we do have some pictures also. So do you want me to do the pictures first, or?
Just while I'm talking about it.
Okay, and for.
You can stand.
Yeah, why don't you stand, and Kyle, if you can stand right beside her. We have some very interesting, great information to share there, so.
Well, we have a magazine, School Transportation News, and so they were looking for some garage stars. And Kyle here got nominated by 13 people in our district to be one of the garage stars featured in the magazine for August. But, and truly, we do appreciate Kyle so much. He and I work very well together, and along with Dr. Kuhn with ordering buses and seeing those needs and fitting those needs. And I just want to read just a couple little paragraphs of what we kind of said about Kyle. So Kyle Howley is a one-man shop going on his eighth year in people transportation, but 28th as a heavy-duty truck and equipment mechanic. He attended our Heartland Career Center while in high school and always had a passion for fixing things. Adding that, he started his career as a mechanic before even graduating high school. He came to MSD of Wauwahatch County when transitioning from the county highway department. Like I said, he was nominated by 13 various members of our school corporation. And Kyle had to turn in some quotes and some things that he found important with his job, and one of those was that he found satisfaction in solving a problem so that it does not become a recurring issue. And he does learn to, we talk about that quite often, problem solving is one of the key components that Kyle adds to our corporation. So one of the other things is that Kyle has had some interns from the career center to help get them geared towards some heavy-duty mechanic work. And one of the most recent ones last year went on to also work at Snyder Tire and Battery and further his education there. So I think Kyle is a great component of our community in that way, too. So we appreciate him in many ways. Again, he is a one-man, and we found that out yesterday. Mr. Keith Baber had to help go take some buses. We had two buses break down at the same time. So if you want to show a couple pictures. So a lot of what Kyle does, there is a lot of this behind the scenes. So every year we have inspections, summer inspections of our school buses, the equipment. And he also gets the Heartland Career Center many prepared for that inspection as well. One of the things that Kyle has done the last several years is he pressure sprays under the buses to prolong their life and just also can find some new things going on with them. We have just recently added these lifts, and I'm going to let you talk more about that because that's your forte. So you can kind of mention how that helps you out.
The mobile column lifts that we purchased have just been a 100% asset. I am no longer up and down on form multiple times per job or per day, makes pressure washing like that much easier. I can now get everything underneath there instead of just like the edges and sort of in the middle. They've just, it's been a lifesaver, honestly. I mean, I go home and I'm not just deep down at the end of the day. So I greatly appreciate it, and I appreciate the staff. All of them that I've worked with have not been a bad person here yet. So, and Mr. Keith Baber, Mr. Gray, yesterday morning jumped in, needed a bus taken to the fountain area, they took it. I went back later, picked it up with the record, brought it back here. When I got back, with the one that I was bringing in, it was a little bit slow moving. So we adapt and overcome, you know? If we do what we need to do to get the job taken care of and get the kids school as quickly and safely as possible, so.
And he shouldn't have said anything about the lift here because it looks like he's holding the bus up with his right hand.
And I have a couple more here. And that was obviously looking down the bus, but he's able to see quite a bit with his lift. So they definitely have been, let's just a little picture of him pushing a button to get those lifted, but.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, and that can go much higher. And we've recently done some reconfiguring of our garage doors.
Yes, we put in two new garage doors and fitted those with high lift openers so I can raise the buses up a full 50 inches with the doors open. Doors close, I can go 57 or so, you know? And that's ample room to be able to do what I need to do and see what I need to do, so.
And I'd like to mention one thing, too, and Dr. Kuhn made two, but one thing I always really enjoyed about Kyle. Bus drivers will come in, or they'll call on the radio, there's something wrong with the bus component. And I'm sure some of it, and if I was driving, too, would be the same way, like, okay, this has happened before, you should know. But he's very patient, very professional, and just basically tells them exactly, at least on the radio, tells them exactly what needs to be done to do that. And so it's just, it's really, really good because there's so many more safety components on buses now that sometimes it's very, very difficult with all the bells and whistles. There aren't necessarily all the fun bells and whistles, but just the things to make it safer. So we appreciate him and his patience and endurance and professionalism when he works with the bus drivers.
Definitely, thank you for adding that, that was good for you.
Yeah, I'll pay you back off of that. Patience definitely is one I'm very impressed with. Besides being a very good, a great mechanic and very knowledgeable, I do appreciate your candy attitude and your positiveness when it comes to things. I trust Kyle to let me know what he needs and make sure that happens, so.
And he's working with our new software, software we've got. He's getting to use it in his world out there for inventory, and we're excited about that, too, aren't we?
Yeah. And we thank Melissa for doing all the work with this and also asking to bring him here because we haven't done that before, and he does a great job, so let's give him a round of applause. All right, you guys are welcome to stay, but you can go ahead and eat, too, if you'd like.
My dog's having puppies, so we're going to head out now.
Thank you.
Kyle won't be as patient as his wife was, it's too nice to him. All right, so some other things to share. I know Mr. Snyder had a couple things, or at least one thing here. So you want to share that, Mr. Snyder? Or can we read that, that you had on the recognition?
Sure, I can share it, you can get right there. I think a lot of people know, but I just wanted to mention it here since I was here tonight. The biggest thing we've had happen as far as a student accomplishment was Eden Hoover was able to get 1,000 receptions and 1,000 digs at the Tomahawk Tourney in North Miami, which was earlier in the season, but whenever we have a student reach those kind of milestones in a career, like I mentioned, that was it.
Okay, and I'd just like to share one thing. So this is from the Northfield and Southwood students. So the city of Wauwahatch is running up, running for the $2 million. It's the Okra Community Development Block Grant Program. And thanks to being named the finalist in the state's Preserving Main Street Program. And we had several of our MSDWC senior internships that helped during that day when the selection committee came. They were the in-person site visit by that selection committee, and basically they waved signs and things like that. And so really, I believe our schools were the only ones that participated in that. I won't read all the names, but there were approximately 26 students. I will put that on in the papers and things like that and the different places when we send out our information. But we just really appreciate the students helping out with that because obviously we're a part of that, too. We have, our district goes into the Wauwahatch city limits, and it's just great that our students were able to be a part of that, too. And we'll wait and see if they actually get that $2 million. That's all I have, then.
All right, thank you. Any public comments on agenda items? If not, I'll entertain motion to approve minutes if reviewed.
I move.
Second?
Call in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll move on to claims questions. It's a large one for Southwood Gym Floor. It said final, that was it, so I'm sure we've had walks through and all that.
Yep, there's a few things as far as base trim that they need to fill in some gaps, but that was it.
I move to approve claims.
Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, payroll.
Payroll reflects our first pay of the 23, 24 square foot.
I move to accept payroll.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Yar.
Aye.
Thank you. Anything on the financials tonight?
Just the end of the month balance report for your viewing shows where we are at the end of August in each of our fund balances.
Go ahead, continue, Mr. Kuhn on the.
Yeah, so we're heading into our last phase before our budget hearing for 2024. And so this phase, we like to review what they call Form 3 and Form 4 as leading up into, like I said, our budget hearing. So this is related to levies and property taxes, so. Mr. Keith Baber? So we'll take a look here, I'd just like to take a dive into our tax rates. One thing that we look on when we are deciding what our upcoming tax rate will be for a new calendar year is our assessed valuation. And so our assessed valuation is something that we, as a school district, do not control, but it does have an impact on the dollars and the tax rates that we may receive in those tax-supported funds. The levy is the money that we collect based off of that assessed valuation and that tax rate. We do have some control over our levy. However, there are some legislative things that may control certain tax rates or certain levy amounts where we just can't, it's not a free-for-all for the school district to say, hey, I want $8 million, and then this is going to happen that way. So we do have some control over the levies, but not total control. And then just to clarify, I think everybody understands this, that we do not receive any state dollars in regards to anything operational for our school districts. And so our levy is a fixed levy, and so it is controlled by our assessed valuation and/or tax rate. So depending on the levy amount that we're wanting, so example, if we need $4 million to fund our operational fund balance, that $4 million is going to be received, but it's going to be controlled by the assessed valuation that will determine the rate. So a higher assessed valuation is going to be a lower tax rate. A lower assessed valuation is going to be a higher tax rate. So one area that we always got to pay attention to is our assessed valuation and how that looks historically. So this is a 10-year look of what our assessed valuation has been up to the 2023 budget year. And as you can see, it's increased over about $200 million over a 10-year period of time. When we were looking at the potential referendum with our one high school project, we had a study done that kind of forecasted out what those assessed valuations may look like into the future so that we could determine how taxes would be impacted over that period of time. And so the blue represents our actual historical tax rates, or excuse me, assessed valuations, and the red represents that projected valuation. Our 2024 assessed valuation looks to be coming in about $941 million. So again, a significant increase from the previous years, which is good because that lowers the tax rate based off the levy that we are anticipating. As a comparison, this is a comparison of assessed valuations amongst our border schools. And you can see we are second amongst those county schools with Huntington being the largest because there are a long town of school districts. Then tax rate, historically, this is our tax rates over an 11-year period of time. And you can see, right now, the green is what covers our operational fund, and that usually hovers around 50 to 55 cents. And then anything in that tan or peach color represents debt, borrowed money, paying back in our debt service. So for 2023, our tax rate was 71 cents. That falls in the 10 percentile of districts around the state of Indiana. And just as a comparison for our border schools, this is where we would fall as the lowest in comparison to our surrounding school districts. So again, our tax-supported funds, our debt service and operations, that's where our tax rates have an impact in collecting monies to operate those funds. And so the main thing that we look at, again, is our assessed valuation. And then we also factor any tax cap or circuit breaker losses that we may have. And so for this coming year, the estimation is about $150,000, which means that those are dollars that we will not receive. So for example, if we're asking for $4 million, we will only get 3.8 million roughly because we won't collect some of those because some of our taxpayers have hit their tax caps. And then TIF districts can also impact that because that's not new assessed valuation that we receive in that area. So when we build our budget and we look at our debt and operational funds, we want to advertise a high rate and a high levy so that we can ensure that we collect the full amount that's needed to cover our budget. And so we use a lower assessed valuation than what we anticipate typically, which will create a higher rate. And that's just to make sure that we cover anything in case things come back differently from the DLGF that we can cover what we need to operate. We factor in any potential tax cap losses, and then we keep in mind any max levy funds that we would have in those funds. For debt service, there's no max. For operation fund, we do have a max that is set. This year, the new max is $4.8 million. Last year, it was 4.6. And that's based off the maximum levy growth quotient, which by law, now, a new law, is capped at 4%. And so if you go to the next slide, the levy growth quotient is based off of the Indiana non-farm personal income growth rates at average, I believe, of six years. And we were due for a 5% increase, but because of the new law, it was capped at 4%. So that would be less dollars than we would have anticipated on a normal basic year, I guess. We talked a little bit about this during our referendum process. We just wanted to make it clear and understood that the levies that we do receive from our property taxes, especially in our operations fund, is not enough to cover our expenses. And so what we have here that is shown are our actual expenses in our operation fund and what our operational fund levy was for that fund. You can see that, on average of those three years, it's about a million dollars short. And so how do we fill that gap? You fill it in one of two ways. We transfer money from education fund to operations fund to fill that gap, or we have to take on some bonding or borrowing to cover things, especially if we have long-term projects or more expensive projects on the horizon. This just gives you a 24-year perspective on where bond rates have been. We are still in a historically low market. We just finalized our 2023 bonds at just over a 3.5% rate. So that was pretty good. So when we look at what we're advertising for our levies, I have in the left side just kind of what we did in 2023 as a comparison. And then in 2024, we are advertising that column there. Our debt service will probably change a little bit. It'll be on a lower end, but that is like something we've used to fill in for the time being because we weren't sure where we would come out with the closing of the bonds. And so we will be advertising a $1.34 tax rate. However, when it all shakes out, we will be in that $1.10 tax rate market with our debt service probably being around 59 cents and our operations fund being around 51 cents for a total of $1.10 for the 2024 budget year. Our next board meeting will then be our budget hearing meeting, where we'll kind of compile everything that we've went over the past couple months into a little presentation, and then we will have our budget adoption for the following board meeting in October. Any questions?
What's irrational behind that levy growth quotient?
I imagine to keep the max rates lower so then the property taxes are lower. Would you agree with that?
I disagree.
We have seen.
That's my question.
Thank you for your honesty, Jim. Any other questions?
No, so with that, then I just ask that you give us the permission to advertise that in our Form 3 so that we can put that on the DLGF website for our upcoming budget hearing.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes, sir.
Second then.
All right, motion on the floor in the second. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to what we were going to refer to as a preliminary determination hearing. The first one, if you bear with me, I'm going to read some of this. The next item on the agenda is for the board to hold a preliminary hearing on the proposed construction project. After a presentation by the administration and its advisors, there'll be an opportunity for you as a public to make comments about the project. The notice of this preliminary determination hearing was published as legally required in the Wauwahatch Plain Dealer. So at this time, I will ask that Chris and whoever might explain once again the purpose of the hearing.
Yes, so pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-20-3.5, a school corporation must hold two public hearings and adopt a resolution to preliminary determine to issue bonds or enter a lease agreement for a project which has a total project cost in excess of certain thresholds. These public hearings are the very beginning of this legal process.
I failed to mention, after we go through the presentation, anyone that would like to speak about this is free to speak. We will now hear from Mr. Kuhn and Mr. Keith Baber.
About the budget, you want to go there and start it?
Yeah, so we've had several work sessions and a few meetings to discuss our options in relation to Sharp Creek. The board had voted to pursue, I believe it was Option 3, which was looking at moving the third and fifth grade grade levels to Northfield while also adding on a cafeteria space at Metro North of Metro.
And this is all in relationship to our continued strategic plan, obviously, strategic plan number four, which deals with facilities, efficiencies, and items like that. So we've talked about it many, many times.
So now we'll hear from Adam from Barring Cove Elementary and Dave from Wygant to support the determination.
And there are no graphics like this to confirm?
Correct, right, right. We've talked about it many, many times, so.
I brought some backup in case. It's the same plans you've seen, very minor revisions to help. Dave was investigating this last time to confirm numbers. I can give a little more detail. Chris's description is about as brief as I was going to give, but as far as sizes, there are square footage, if that helps. But at Northfield, the existing CTE program space on the northwest side of the building would be removed. That's where the elementary division would go, grades 3 through 5. And then on the southwest corner of the building, extend the corridor and create two larger classroom spaces for CTE to live. That's the basics of the project. And then Chris mentioned the cafeteria division would be on the west side of the gym at Metro North. Extend that corridor to the west to allow students to get there, dedicate a cafeteria space, very simple addition sized for the school.
Dave, do you have anything to add to that, or?
No, and then along the way, as we've been having our meetings and looking at the different options, a couple of the times we've been doing some high-level cost estimating to give the school system an idea on the value of this project. I think the last, I didn't bring a copy with me, so I'm going off memory. I think the last estimate we did that was inclusive of not only our costs, but soft costs and design fees and everything was around a $33 million number. So that was the last estimate we did, and that included a little bit of a chiller-boiler upgrade at Northfield to accommodate what we think might be a potential need or additional capacity we're going to need to provide heating and cooling for the additional school. capacity we're going to need to provide heating and cooling for the additional square footage that would be added to the building.
Any questions? No, appreciate working with you guys through this process and part.
Thank you.
Well, now here from Stifel. How many times have I screwed that up, Jim?
I would like to see how you do this, though.
At least I can say the grip.
I was hoping you forgot that. Did you say that? I have a practice before I can.
Jim's going to tell us about the proposed project and how it will be financed, as well as information about the effect on typical property taxes.
Thank you. With that introduction, I will try to keep all Sidney and Tom's names out. I'll put on the next slide. So we want to start with your operations fund. We're looking at your total tax, just as the budget was introduced, we're going to look at your total tax rate. The operations fund, you can see that with the AB growth, it's pushed down your tax rate for operations fund. And then with the maximum growth quotient, we do figure that in there in our modeling at that 4%, where we were anticipating 5% in our prior models. So that's changed that little dip. And then starting in 2028, we start to assume zero assessed value growth at that point, but in the operations, we're also just holding the back growth quotient, we're holding it at 5% at that point, assuming that the legislature doesn't renew their hold on that, that we give back to somewhat of a normal growth quotient there. We move to the next slide. We want to add our current debt service rate. So this includes in 2023, everything you've done up to that point, and you'll see that pushes us up a little over 70 cents. We go to the next slide. What were, the bonds we just sold fit right in here. That was the $9,955,000 that we just sold. We're closing those October 3rd and you'll see that that brings that tax rate up to that $1.10 that Chris just spoke about in your budget as a total tax rate. And you'll see that we pay those off very quickly to leave flexibility for this project and other needs. We go to the next slide. This is what we propose, a $39 million bond issue again. That's a very conservative number from what you've just heard from the architects and construction managers. So we're trying to still stay conservative. So we're estimating no more than a $39 million bond issue, staying completely within that $1.10 total tax rate. We're structured it right now with the idea that we would hold that rate for a couple of years and leave flexibility for other needs you may have. That's the way this is presented to the extent no other needs were to materialize. Most schools always have needs, but to the extent we could always shorten their payments and close that gap, but right now felt it best in working with the administration to leave that future flexibility in there, all stayed within that $1.10 tax rate that will be established this coming year. From that, that $39 million, we would anticipate cost of issuance. And if you recall, cost of issuance are the attorney's fees, underwriting fees, that's selling the bonds, ringing costs, title insurance, any of the things that happen above and beyond the brick and mortar and construction soft costs. We estimate those to be a little over $560,000. We knew about $38.4 million of brick and mortar and construction hard and soft costs to go towards the project. There are a few items that, as you proceed, will be in your final resolution after your next hearing, and I want to highlight those. The first three are what I just covered. That's the breakdown of the costs. Next, we always have to advertise the maximum interest rate. My model is based on an average of 5%, but those rates, because we have short-term, long-term range up to 6% as a worst-case number. Based on that, we have to put our estimated maximum interest cost. We show that at $22.5 million. That again is based on that 5% average. As the bonds we just sold, they were three-year bonds. The average rate was just around 3.5%. However, the one and two-year bond rates are higher than the 20-year bond rates right now. So we're still in that three to three and three-quarter range for a 20-year bond issue. So again, we've got a pretty good cushion in there in that $22.5 million interest number. Maximum term, 22 years. If you remember last time, we could only sell bonds for 20 years, no more than 20 years, but we advertise the lease slightly longer in case there are delays. We don't have to go back through the lease process. So the lease is in place, however, the lease term, once we sell bonds, that lease will cease at the time the bonds are paid off. So we advertise the lease a little longer to give us that flexibility. Our maximum annual lease payments are the most we would see in any given year and again, rounded up and conservative because with all of the assessed value fluctuations, we want enough payment there that if you have another strong year in the year that this first payment comes on, we need to have enough room in that payment to try to protect your tax rate. Again, those will all pare back down to exactly where the bonds are sold at. So that, when I say 6 million, it's not 6 million for 20 years. And you remember that chart, we have high payments in those first two years and then it lowers the remaining years. Those will all come down to the actual number when and if bonds are sold. And then we have the maximum tax impact of that, it's 37 cents on its own, but because we're looking at the impact with other debt coming off and structured in around your total payment, we're looking at zero net increase to your total tax rate. Next slide. Couple other things. We do have to publish your current debt service levy. This is representative of 23 levy, that's a $1,514. Current debt rate is your 2023 debt rate of 17.66 cents. There are a couple ratios that have to be included, and I think we shared those in our previous hearings, but these are all adjusted. So the first one is your total debt payments, including any projected payments, divided by your current assessed value, and that comes in at 0.61%. Small, that's a low number as we look at it statewide and nationally. The ratio that's more important to the bond market is taking your outstanding debt, including the proposed new debt, and any outstanding debt of any of your underlying or overlapping taxing districts, divided by assessed value. And that's kind of giving the market a ratio of your debt to your value. And that comes in at 5.42% at today's assessed value. That is what I would, fits in that low to moderate range. It's not on the very, completely low, but still very low to moderate. And as far as your peers and nationwide buyers of your bonds, very attractive number when you go out in the markets. This the legislature asked for, but to me, this is one real number that they've asked for, it means something. And then finally, we do have to publish 10 years of the estimated debt service tax levy and tax rate going forward with this model. And you'll see that we do show the debt service rate jumping just a little bit in the years 24 and 25 and then kind of working its way down. But because we're incorporating this in and around your total tax rate, we have that tax rate going up a little in debt in the places where your operations has come down. So that's why that looks that way, but that is this flat-out requirement that we must publish that table as part of this requirement. At this point, now, do I have another slide?
No.
Okay.
There's another slide that's not yours.
Yeah, okay.
Do you have a hand with HR report?
No, I'll pass on that too. I'm sure I'll mispronounce something there. So at this point, I'll turn it back around to you, but these are the, this is the same presentation that we'll use in your next hearing, unless there's something that comes up that you need to change or modify, but this lays out everything that will be included in the resolutions we're considering. That should be.
Thank you, Jim.
Questions again? I guess I have a couple. So our bond rating stayed at AA plus, right? So that'll help along with the financial indicators to make it positive, so hopefully a attractive interest rate for us.
Yes, you're AA plus over A plus. The AA plus represents the state support of your debt and the A plus represents your underlying credit. You stayed right where you were. I believe you moved up a little bit from the standpoint of having very strong balances, but not enough to move to the next rating level. And part of that's dictated by other socioeconomic local environment, not just the school district, but you're very strong and well above the average in Indiana, as far as ratings for schools.
No, that's good news. I guess my second last question is when you're figuring that half a million dollar expense for issuance, how is that figured? It's not a percentage because you don't know the billable hours for lawyers?
Yeah, so, so, underwriting fees. So underwriting fees, which is what you pay us, are a combination of a fixed, not a fixed fee, it's three-quarters of the fee would probably be going to pay our brokers. So we have to have enough fee in there to get brokers to look at your bonds against other bonds in the market. And then the other part is a management fee for what I do, and then there's a risk portion of that. So that one's all variable based on a percentage of the bond issue. Attorney's fees are, they are hourly, but on the bond council side, typically they quote us a flat fee and they keep track of their internal hours, but it's a flat fee. Local attorneys are all different. Some are on retainers, others are per deal, and we try to use an estimate and then talking to Josh and others, try to get those all set. The rating agencies, they quote us a fee and that's typically based on the type of credit, not your rating, but the type of underlying security, and that is a fee based on size. So again, a variable cost. Title work is based on size. Trustees are based on a fee for their services. So it's a combination of those. And we try to do a conservative estimate, not knowing, like you said, where we are today. We want to end up high and bring that down at some point.
Your problem brings all those costs together then and you summarize?
Yes. And with your last bond issue, as a matter of fact, I forgot a page for Chris, we have that delineated as part of that cost of issuance, so Chris has that and bills come in to offset. Right now, I have a rough scratch sheet of all these pieces to get to that number, but as we get closer before bond sales, we actually get the final quotes from everybody of where are you today, what's your actual numbers, what kind of reimbursables do you have, et cetera? So we know all of those numbers down very close.
For my own education then, you just push these bond issuances out into the public marketplace, or does somebody try and shop them for the lowest interest cost?
No, so our, Stifel has a full national group of institutional salesmen and then we have retail salesmen or brokers throughout the nation. So every, your bond issue, every maturity, so every six months, we have bonds maturing. And I don't know if it's easier to look at this last deal we did, those three years. So we had six different maturities. We would have brokers selling those and looking for buyers at each maturity. So it's not like going to a bank or one buyer that says, I want to buy this entire package and here's what I'll do for them. On a 20-year bond issue, we will have 40 or so different maturities and we have different buyers at the one to three-year range. We have buyers that like the three to five. The big insurance companies really want the 15 to 20-year range or the 10 to 15. It all varies, the market changes. There's also, we have buyers by size. So if you have some small maturities, smaller maturities upfront on our last issue, some of those maturities may not have as much interest, so we have to mess with the rates a little bit and work hard there. But then as an example, say we have maturities of $3 million per maturity, that brings in a whole other set of buyers. And so the more buyers we can get in at every maturity, the more competitive that rate is. And so we get to push those against each other. But it is truly a process of every single maturity and finding different tier buyers for different pieces rather than one buyer that has to absorb everything. And we believe that in day in and day out, that type of process of what we call underwriting bonds in the public market, yes, they're being sold public, but they are also being sold very definitively at different levels, brings that rate down versus finding one buyer for a bond.
I guess, yes, that answers my question, I guess, was is somebody working on our behalf to make sure that the bond cost is as economical as possible?
Well, my goal is to do that so you want me back, but, yes, but ultimately, I'm trying to keep track of that. I'm representing you guys on the Stifel side. Now, my buyers, the brokers, want you to pay as high a rate as you can pay because it's a lot easier for them to sell bonds. So that's where our underwriter fits in the middle and I'm pushing lowest rate, they're pushing higher, and somewhere in between, supply and demand works its magic based on that underwriter absorbing all that and making sure that every maturity has people looking at it and people calling on it. Pre-marketing makes a difference. We also will, as your bond issue gets closer to coming to fruition, we start pre-marketing your bonds so buyers, on the day we sell bonds, isn't the first day they've looked at your deal. They know your deal's coming. They know, the people that don't know, Wabash, Indiana, have to be contacted. People in San Francisco need to be reminded, this is the heartland, these people pay their bills, et cetera, et cetera. People in Indianapolis or Chicago know Wabash and it's a different sales pitch. But it's the idea that we've got to get out in front of people early because any given day, today we're in market before we can re-schools. There were four deals in Indiana that sold today. You want to make sure somebody's looked at your deal rather than it showing up on their stack this morning and they have to make a decision. So there's a lot to go in in there. We hope we do a very, a very good job at that.
No, I think you do. I appreciate it. Sorry, I don't know.
No, this fair.
Just want you to do HR now.
That will be better. All right, well, now looking at for public hearing, if you have a comment, as a board are willing to listen, gain information. If not, I'd like to thank you for listening to all this. I learned something. I appreciate it. Please note, this is just the first step in the legal process. No board action is legally required at this hearing, but rather this hearing solely to hear public comment. Board will continue to work with administration and its professionals to look for efficiencies to conserve tax dollars while meeting our educational needs. The board will hold a second public hearing in this boardroom on September the 26th at 6:00 PM. Appreciate it. Thank you for all that participated in that.
There's nothing to say, but we do.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. All right, the next item up is human resources. Very few this evening. We have Deb Elliott, a paraprofessional at Shark Creek as designing and transferring. We have Kathy Lyons transferring from Cook at Northfield to a paraprofessional position at Shark Creek, and Mark Smith transferring from custodian to head custodian. And Mark Smith transferring from custodian to head custodian at Southwood High School. Now it's affecting Dan Hall.
I'll move to the HR report.
Sure.
Call in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Anything tonight from Hartman?
No, we have a monthly meeting either next week.
Mr. Keith Bieber, superintendent.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things I want to celebrate again. This might could have been a celebration and recognition of staff, but on August 24th, you know that we had our first volleyball game at Southwood on the new gym floor. And it actually worked out very nicely that we also celebrated Tom Fennickel being inducted into the Indiana High School Volleyball Coaches Association. So with over 800 wins, Coach Fennickel ranks in the top five of all-time Indiana volleyball history. So a lot of fun that night. So Mrs. Lewis can share more if she wants, but it was a really nice evening. A lot of people thought they were there because of the gym floor. Probably had some people there because of gym floor, but a lot more of it was because of the celebration of Coach Fennickel. Also, time does fly. We're already past the midterms for grading period for the first nine weeks. So we're in the second half of the first nine weeks. Also on Friday, we had a great day with a lot of professional development with different employee groups. But obviously the teachers did a lot with the state standards, I read, I learn, changes and blueprints and resources. Nurses and custodians had some various meetings in the morning. Then in the afternoon, we had a great presentation to us by Thomas Blackwell, who was once again on target, going along with our admission statement of inspiring our staff. So we can inspire our students. And so it was really, really neat though. We don't do that very often as far as having all of our staff members in one room, but we did. I did have a selfie done and I wasn't the selfie first because it wasn't working out, but Thomas Blackwell did the selfie. We were going to push that out, but unfortunately it was very blurry for all, everybody else. So his picture was great, but everybody else looked like a little blurry people here and there. Also had, just for fun too, on the rowing parade that was Saturday, they actually had the retired teachers as the grand marshals. And so I had fun driving the activity bus. Unfortunately, with all the safety protocol, just like we talked about with Kyle, you cannot stick your head out of those windows anymore because it only goes, so you can't stick your head out. But they tried to throw candy out and they did that and that was a lot of fun, so. And it was teachers from all over, not just from MSD, so that was neat to see all them, but we had MSD teachers too and that was a lot of fun. And also just kind of announced that class reunions sometimes ask for different tours of the building. So gave a tour Friday night to the class of 68, that was 55 years. And then Saturday morning, the class of 78, 45 years. And so if any classes are interested in tours, I love to do that, principals can do that also, but it's always fun to hear them. And really, when you do the tour, you have to be very, very patient because they haven't seen each other for 55 years. And sometimes they just want to talk all the time. So that's why we have the attention rooms and we put them in there. That's all good. So that's all I have for tonight, but a lot of great things happening at MSD and love being a part of it.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Keith Bieber, I think it's, as I was writing tonight.
Yes.
I think it's fair to share this. The newest MSD member arrived about an hour ago, Jensen Flyer.
Oh, all right.
Nate and Chloe.
Yep, they both, Chloe is a social worker at Metro North Elementary and Nate is teacher at White's Junior Senior High School. So now we have another one in our family. That's great. Thank you for sharing that. I knew that that was, that was close, but.
It was.
Yes. Well, thank you for sharing that.
Anything to present from Mr. Drake?
Uh, no.
I think he pushed down some stuff over, I don't know if you saw it, I just gave a quick overview. We got testing scores sent to us today or?
Well, that was, that was a newsletter. That was a newsletter from Laura about a lot of different things, but that also included a lot of test scores.
That's a good information. All right. First item of the new business is school improvement plans. Northfield, Whites, Southwood Junior Senior Highs.
And we're going to go in that order this time? I selected that order because, just because I did. So I guess it's by seniority. So seniority gets to go first as far as principal here at MSD, so. Mr. Snyder, you're up.
All right, rather than going through all 30 pages after the other long presentations, then you could flip them. We have two main goals in this plan though. And as I look at the plan, everything falls on these two main goals, which is academics and environment. And so academics, like the scores that you just talked about with that tenant Laura sent out, not that every kid's a test score, there are way more than that, but that's what we have to gauge and measure ourselves. So we look at it and compare ourselves with surrounding districts and the state. And so I learn for sixth through eighth grade and PSAT, SAT for sophomores and juniors along with some NWA in between there. But one thing that we're very happy with is graduation rate and success after graduation. So one thing that Northfield sometimes is a little lower on, we're pretty good. But because we do have the Riser Room, I've talked to you all before, we have some people graduate on a non-diploma track or they're severe need students that sometimes affect that. Our graduation rate for this 2023 class will be 96.8%, which is still pretty darn good. So we're proud of that. And then other, success after graduation, everything in the state's doing is rolling over to this thing called Indiana GPS or graduates preparing to succeed or something like that. And so we're trying to change some of our school improvement plan to that. And on that site, it says the state average for enrollment or employment after graduation is 85%. And so you look at our graduates, either going to college, trade school or working, 98% of our graduates are either in college or working or enlisting in the military or doing something. And if the state average is 85%, 98% sounds pretty good to me. So that was something that we looked at that we were very happy about. Because one thing that we aren't always, we try to get the state average on everything. Our SAT scores are right there. We'd like for them to be higher, but it's hard to motivate juniors and seniors that are planning on going right to the workforce to get a great score on an SAT. And in our community here, we encourage them. But as you all know, living and working around here, not all of our kids really care that much about their SAT score. That's just the bottom line. We get them, try to encourage them. We're close to the state average. I'm talking just a percent or two away. But what means more to me is when the state's saying 98% of our graduates are moving on and being successful in other things. And so that was a number. The other thing is environment. So that's pretty much the academic piece and you can ask any questions about that and that one. In environment, we're trying to make Northfield a safe place and a fun place just to go to school and be every day. Bottom line, be accessible to parents, be accessible to families, answer their questions. And that's something we really work on. Honoring those kids for positive North honors, paying attention, being responsive to parents that call. Student council and key club planning on homecoming coming up here in a couple of weeks and fun things for the kids to do that week in regards to homecoming and just making that school environment and experience the best it can be. The last thing that goes into all that environment and academics is attendance. And that's something the state changed. I'm used to just looking at straight attendance. Of course, attendance for kids to do well, they got to be there. But I'm, I'm used to just looking at straight percent attendance, which we've always been around 96 to 98%. Well, if you look on that Indiana public website, everybody can see the state average is 60% and the Northfield average is 61%. Well, what they're doing is the state's calculating that now and saying the number of kids that miss 10 or less days. So what it's saying is 61% of our kids are missing less than 10 days a year. That means we have, you know, 40%, 39% missing 10 or more days. So that's something we're really paying attention to. That's been a problem, to be honest with you, for a lot of schools ever since the pandemic. But a few of them that just want to stay home and that's a constant battle. But that's part of school improvement, that's a big part of it. So that's the main thing we're focusing on in the Northfield school improvement plan. Do you have any questions?
All right, thank you, Mr. Snyder. Okay, Mr. McDivitt.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Keith Bieber. I think everybody knows, but just for clarity, even though White's Junior Senior High School is one high school, we really have two pieces of our school. So there's the residential part and then there's the bridge part, but it all falls under the same high school. And so what that means for our school improvement plan is that while we have the same goals, some of the strategies are just going to be a little bit different. So our overall graduation rate, so this graduation rate, again, this is both bridge students and the kids that are with us residentially, has been incrementally increasing over the last several years. We just missed, this is nothing compared to Southwood or Northfield, but we just missed 60% this past year. It was like 59.7%. We really want to get that to 67%. Why do we pick 67%? Once we break that threshold, the state will take us out of a school, we're like in a special status, not in a good way, of high schools around the state because our graduation rate is so low. So, but once we can get to 67%, that takes us out of a certain type of category. Certainly, we'd like to do better than that, but just in terms of our historical trend, getting to 67% of our graduation rate would be a significant improvement. We also want to work on our attendance rate, which honestly, this will also in long-term impact the graduation rate. And most of this is going to happen on the bridge side, as you might think, well, residentially, don't your kids come to school? Yes, they do. That's a very good attendance rate residentially. But what happens with bridge, because it's a crash recovery program and it's, it's full of students that historically have not had a good track record of attending school and doing well in school, are those the students we try to specialize in. But one of the things the bridge staff has been doing very well over the last couple of years is making sure those students are engaged. And so they have a, they implement the process where the students that are engaged, they're contacting them via email or phone call. If that, if they're not engaged long enough, they will eventually remove them from the roles. And a lot of times what happens, those kids don't re-enroll anywhere else and so they become dropouts. It hurts the graduation rate. But it's still the right thing to do to accept these kids. We are a school of last resort, but one of the things Bridge is doing to impact attendance is to, not that they weren't doing this before, but even more intentionally following up with kids that aren't engaged on a regular basis, try to re-engage them, hopefully create a little bit of success to keep them involved in the program. So we're really pleased about the progress we're making. I did know that Tanya wanted to be here tonight, not that she was going to speak, but she did learn just this evening that her grandfather, my grandfather was 102 years old, passed away today. But actually, Tanya, it's no big deal, we got it covered. But we're pleased with the progress we're making, but again, we really are working to get that 67% threshold.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McDivitt. We'll move on to Southwood, Mrs. Lewis.
All right, so our first focus this year is going to be academics and it's the second year for sixth grade to be with us. And I'm very pleased with how cohesive that sixth through eighth grade group has become. I think it really helped with sixth grade moving to the bell schedule that summer for 12th is now on. They've integrated very well this second year. And so looking at our sixth through eighth grade team, our focus is going to be on improving those I learn, math and ELA scores. And there's always room for improvement. Looking at this year's scores, we really would like to see a goal of at least 50% of our sixth through eighth graders meeting that adequate growth status. And right now, just looking at the data that was coming in from last year, our seventh and eighth graders in mind were about 46 in ELA and about 31 in math. And our sixth grade right now is about 69% in ELA and 49 in math. Overall proficiency in math is only 35%. So we have a lot of work to do in math. ELA was a little bit stronger, right about 45%. So looking at what we can do with that sixth through eighth grade team, we've started to restructure our homeroom or nighttime a little bit different. We've limited clubs and organizations to meet only on Mondays and Fridays. So that allows Tuesday through Thursday to focus on interventions, academics. Our homeroom teachers, I'm using the phrase or the term accountability partner. So our homerooms are very small, like 10 to 15 students per teacher. And so that really allows that teacher to come in, build that relationship with the student, get to know that student and then come alongside them as accountability partner to stay on top of them. If they're on that F-list that comes out every week, then they can come alongside them to help guide them in the direction they need to go or help facilitate getting to the teacher that they need to during the week so that we can improve that. And then also be working with our sixth through eighth grade teachers during freshman development and then morning meetings to start facilitating, how do we use the data? Because a big hurdle for our teachers is we've got this data, we don't know what to do with it. You know, we can look at it, but we don't really know how to take it from that step that we received it and move it into something applicable that we can do with our students and really start to target groups of students and work with them on that remediation staff. So that's what's coming ahead with our junior high team starting next month. We also are going to focus on attendance and graduation rates. There's always room for improvement. I would love to see us meet that 100% graduation rate this year. Not quite sure if we're going to get there, but that is our goal. Attendance, we have shifted in our revamping our PBIS program a little bit so that we can have more proactive, positive interventions for our students to try to get them to be present in school. We have the handful of students that struggled to get to school, but we've been very proactive so far this year. A lot thanks to Mrs. Johnson and SRO Lingibardo's for really stepping up and taking forward that to nip that in the bud before it gets to be too much of a problem for our students. Also, I like to think of this year as a year of preparation. Looking ahead academic-wise, I would love to see us start moving to become STEM certified. We have some fantastic teachers on our staff right now who really can lead the way with this. They're already doing incredible things in our classrooms with this. This is a two, three-year process, it's very rigorous. But I think we can start that conversation this year with our teachers building wide to get that process ready so that we can really implement that and do what we need to do full steam next year. The other area that is an area of preparation for this year headed into next year is taking a look at what our course offerings are. We really need to have something in-house as far as career and technical education. We have the staff in-house. The programming, in my opinion, is just not quite where it needs to be in order to offer those pathways in-house. So we need to give our students as many academic options as possible and we need to have that CTE component in-house as well as industry certification. So just a couple of areas where we can start looking ahead to next year when we start next month, looking to what we're going to offer as far as courses. And we at Southwood are going to be in a very unique position coming up where we're going to have some flexibility with our staffing, with some potential retirements that we can start to use that to our advantage with future staffing and what we're going to offer and provide our students.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Lewis. And so I would just ask that you approve these. We will come back next meeting to have the elementary comment, but I'd ask that we have a motion to approve the school improvement plans.
Sure.
Clear.
Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. A lot of work. We have a second item of the business, recommendation to approve Joel Martin as principal at Shark Creek Elementary as a district school safety specialist.
Yeah, so basically according to Indiana Code 10-21-1-9, we have to designate a school safety specialist for the district that is not a school resource officer. And so I did send to you a memo, basically just outlining some of that and some of the tasks that he will complete, but also complete with a lot of help from our school resource officers, other principals and other school safety specialists. So I just ask that you approve him as our district school safety specialist.
Sure. Call in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Third item is overnight camping trip for Shark Creek fourth graders to Camp Tecumseh in Brookston. That'd be the fifth and sixth of next month. So.
Clear.
Call in favor of approval, say aye. Last item this evening was. FFA to attend National FFA Convention, and that would be the 3rd of November. Do you know where that is at?
Like the United States.
All right. All right. All right. That's the last of the new business. Any ideas from the board? We've got first reading of Board Policy 4230.
Yeah, this is a real, real easy one. So 4230 seclusion restraint. The only thing that wasn't in this document that needs to be updated, and we actually did receive some information that said that we actually had a very, very good policy, but we did not have a timeframe. So the only thing that's changed is this paragraph that you can see highlighted, in just really 24 hours, a parent or guardian must be notified of abuse or physical restraint and their isolated time out with their student within 24 hours of an incident. And so that is the reasonable time that we have put, and typically that's already happened. We did not have the 24 hours in there, so that's the only change. There's no vote tonight. Put out the second reading on this next meeting and let you vote like that.
All right, thank you. Any public comment? Ideas from the board? If not, we're adjourned.